Here this time.
All right, I want to call this uh July twenty six, twenty twenty three meeting to order. Eddie, would you uh lead us in pledge?
Yeah.
Who gets the copy?
They just give the these to here.
This is just the uh. Okay, here's real estate.
So these are just cut, we don't need signing. These are wrist stack right there.
Okay, uh that is a real estate exoneration for and that's. Looks like a lot, but for this time of year, they got that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate exoneration presented this morning.
Second, on favor.
And the second thing is two of those, you'll see right here that where it says straight cancel. Those two had applied for. A correction of assessment because they weren't paying enough, write that down because you don't see that very often. So these are corrections of the set that apply to those, so if I handle this ticket and he reissued the ticket. Uh like this one was class two, should have been class four. And then this one uh didn't have the house on it. And they wanted it added back, so there you go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the two applications for correction of assessment.
Second, on favor. Is this it, Eddie?
Yeah.
Down at the very bottom, you guys. Did you get my where I returned the email said to to?
I sent that guy upon this to send us a uh. A contract. So that soon as we get the contract in hand, we'll sign it and get the the borrow. And these are a couple of consolidations we do now or?
Yeah. And they're just owners of same owners consolidating tracks or. Division, there's one, yeah, there's one division and one consolidation.
Yes.
Um but there it's the same owners, they're not changing ownership. Um so I mean that we approved those.
Second, on favor.
And Commissioner, have any uh questions about the vouchers and invoices? No, you're skipping payroll. It's on the same line.
Oh, gosh, it is, isn't it? There wasn't.
Yeah, okay, so.
Well, yeah, but.
I move we approve the second half of payroll.
Second.
On favor. Confusing down there.
Yeah, she, yes, just forgot to hit in on that one.
The uh. Yeah, the voucher invoices.
Thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, on favor. Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July twelve.
Second.
On favor.
Can move that we approve the state settlements.
Second. On favor.
Hey, first thing is the WV quarter.
I move that we approve the WV quarter agreement.
Seconds, on favor.
So you won't wait on me? Letter the PSC. So this is for the New Haven PSD.
That's what we discussed. About when that.
I haven't seen the letter though.
We don't have a letter. You read that yesterday?
Oh, I didn't see it.
When is that hearing Friday?
First Friday, I mean Monday.
Oh, so it's on Monday.
We've drawn the uh. Is a deadline for submitting questions. To be entered into evidence that the PSD are due uh by authority. Uh that's uh. A whole different process than what I was currently even formerly uh familiar with. Now the PSD hearing, you enter your. You take your own question. And you answer your question in writing and submit it into evidence for the PSD hearing. Now, I've been trying to find out whether or not uh. Any public and other entities will be able to uh give testimony. From the floor, but it does not look like that's the way it's going to happen. That uh actually uh. I think you may have a copy of a letter. A recommended letter for the State County Commission to discuss the letter of support. Moving forward with the uh process on contract eighteen. Letter in here, I think you have a.
Can you? You got one? You had, you had. I'd hand it to Ms. Taylor, she's the lawyer.
Well, there's two letters there, one is a letter which deserves attention. That the Summers County Commission uh is for sending to the uh, they have a couple of projects. That are uh expanded and limbo also to this uh ruling not go uh. Fairable, there's also a worry about the water company uh, you know, taking the position at some point that. They'll just decide to quit involving themselves in the public private partnerships. They did once before when they failed to get a favorable rate increase before the PSD. They took their ball and went home for about two or two and a half years, which stopped all progress. That we had uh in the works at that time, that's several years ago. And um after that with uh different pressures from different entities. Followed with the TSC being the one that uh. Why the water company would want to alienate anybody on the PSD board in Charleston would be far beyond my comprehension.
Might be getting too big for the bridges.
It could be.
Okay, is this the first time they've changed the the procedures that that's going?
As far as I know, this is the first changing direction. Uh I was the the PSD formerly would announce a hearing and everybody would come and shout off and. And clear the air, and then when they done, the PSD just went in and took care of whatever they wanted.
Is that the way it's done, it been done before in the past?
They are apparently eliminating that public period of uh testimony.
Could have been because the commission requested a a a meeting with all the parties, with the commissioners?
It didn't really list uh the PSD, we were trying to get approval. Final for the PSA so that we could advertise contract everything. And drug on and drug on and we. Tried and tried to get it to be forward on in an expedition manner because timeline goes forward. Funding disappears if we don't go to construction. And so uh. Uh finally, PSD did rule, they gave us a preliminary approval. But it left uh them an open door to change their decision if they wanted to. Well, I think it was their plan all along was to determine that the. Surcharge that we had in place and 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 had 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 in place since day one. Was it going to be passed on to the customers, they wanted the water company to pay that surcharge. And if I'm not mistaken, to the tunes of uh fifteen thousand dollar a month for the loan payback for the. Funding shortfall we were having. Well, uh naturally the water company, but they also left an open door in their decision. That the water company could pass this loan payback. Onto all of West Virginia American Water Company customers in the whole state. And the amount that was raised, very negative to statewide uh number of people. Well, the water company uh uh filed papers to oppose that decision. And so now we're in the process of uh having a hearing and going through the legal process as far. PSD regulations are set forth and and I guess it could eventually. End up in state court system, which would basically be a black hole, yes, maybe. Yeah, but uh there is a hearing, it said. Our attorney bill tissue has the uh. Anyway, looks like I'm the last man standing. But uh I know y'all got excited when you saw me come in, thought I had money to give you. I could see it in your eyes, but.
We had somebody give back some taxes this morning, so.
I can tell you that with Golly River and Canal Falls PSDs, there was a public hearing area. And then they had the actual hearing a month later. With Armstrong Creek, that just happened last Friday, we had the public comment, then the hearing. And then a a ruling right after the hearing. So there there seems to be a two different ways that they can go with this.
Well, that, yeah, that was an emergency situation, though.
Yeah.
Probably the distinction.
Yeah, so.
And so the Armstrong situation on on the news and uh but uh.
So Kenny, I think what we need is is a similar letter for us to sign. Um similar to the one that that they wrote for Summers County. And we can go ahead and um, you know, approve it in concept and and today. And then if you get it to us, I'll do some edits and send it around and we'll have, we'll have it stamped.
Well, I I got a meeting today to uh deal or turn to. It looks like I'll probably be wanting to talk to him or at least uh submitting my questions to myself. And my answer would be the most redundant thing I have ever heard. If that's the hoop we have to jump, that's the hoop we have to jump, so uh.
And we'll include as as an attachment, let's include that package that we got from the New Haven PSD members who came to that meeting.
The letter that lady wrote?
Yeah, the letter.
And I was talking about that to uh Allison yesterday, how touching that letter was. That needs to be attached and put with, that's a good idea, Miss Taylor, yeah.
But you know, it's uh if I'm not mistaken, the actual hearing that we're talking about is September the eighteenth.
And uh do you make sure they read that letter also?
I have to submit uh. Well, what they'll do, what I understand what to do, they'll get down there and they'll ask me if I submitted uh. Is who I am, whatnot, and if I submitted my fish nature and then they'll say uh the information has been entered in the evidence. In the story and I'm done. That's what I think that feels the the what would happen.
We can attach it to our letter, though, and then it'll be in evidence.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway. If you can submit pertaining to the uh hearing, uh the letter or if you have to. Uh propose a question, give it just like the question.
Can we say?
Does the county commission have any input on on this process?
And then we say yes.
And then we say yes.
And then you put the explanation, then read.
And you drop your law letter off.
I I like it, can I mean, I like it, if we do it.
I had that brain going on that drive.
I like it. I think they need to listen to that letter.
Can you ask Thompson to put something together for us like they did for Summers County?
Well.
A letter with the specifics.
Uh I think uh.
It needs to be in the letter coming from us like it was for Summers County, he needs to take the data that's in that second document.
Right, this has to have some terminology adjusted that are pertinent to the State County Commission and. And our location and uh huh, but um.
Can y'all hear me?
You know, is uh very important, if we don't go to construction. By next, these things are thirty birth, and the way this thing is dragging on, we're not going to have anything accomplished this year. And then when you look at your timelines for PSD approval, and well, they just recently, who was it? One of the agents might have been Army Corps wants us to do a study on. Bigger batch or something in there.
Yeah. But when can you, could you get this done today? I mean, I'm, I know we're pushing you to do it, but there's a time limit to submit all this stuff.
And with regard to that Army Corps thing, I know Senator Capito's been trying really hard to. Mitigate that sort of cumbersome government interference with infrastructure projects, so we probably need to bring that to her attention.
That is so important, and I want to say is that to me, it's been always uh. Burn under my pad with that. You know, we're taking, it doesn't even from one government agency, one state agency. And paying for permits and 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 tests and studies. Required by another state agency, you know, it's like a Department of Highways permit. Why do we need to pay for the, I know if we have to get a bond, it's to protect us for perfect down community damages that. We may have to have, but you know, insurance required by contract. Uh to start with, it needs to be bound for a year uh on this one as well, but anyway.
So you think you could get us a letter from them ASAP?
I will uh attempt to get this covered today with the bill tissue and this law. You know, just for the record, we really don't have a meeting place, we don't have a printer. We don't have a copy machine, so anything that transpires is part of the business that is produced. By my request to my daughter-in-law, who is the computer capable of doing the letters and.
Thompson and Litton should do that one for us.
Yeah, I will contact Thompson and Litton.
I mean, as soon as you leave.
He's gone today, but that's why I'm here, making the presentation or anything to produce. He had to go uh out of town for today and uh he called me and asked me about the sure if I was going to be here and uh. Also, I thought Phil, we may be here, but he was uh. I had meetings.
He should probably try to get it done by tomorrow since the deadline is the thirtieth.
And I guess anything that's produced, I'll have it, I'll have.
Thank you so much.
Well, we gotta move.
I know you gotta move quick.
Go ahead.
We have to get a highway bond reached through two contracts without a lot of peace. And and that that that's got reimbursed, we paid it the PSD and we will reimburse. Well, the time has rolled around, and I complained about that it starts with what we had to get a highway bond. Before we get finished up our application, whether it's a construction bond and we weren't even working yet. Well, a year has rolled around, we had to renew the highway bond, which is another two thousand dollars. Which will come out of the public funding for nothing, we're still sitting, so anyway.
Alright. Alright, thank you.
You don't need me to disrupt anything else. You know, I'm eager and always willing to help.
Mr. Scott?
Three different things. I'm coming for you today to request a little bit of funding for a solar project we've been working on for almost a year. The numbers have changed a little bit due to inflation. But if we can request this funding, it's eighty seven thousand dollars now for the solar part of this. And talking of then, we would be the first municipal building in the state of West Virginia to be completely solar.
Is this the same?
Is that?
Project that?
That is the same project we've been working on for a while.
That you and I talked about and I told you, put stuff together for the commission?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good, glad to see you finally got it done.
We got it done because I asked him to get on the agenda.
It's been done, it's just been trying to get here.
Yeah, um why don't you go ahead, it's a municipal building, but but tell us.
We now have a fitness center, we now have a library. We now have, and it's emergency shelter, we have a full kitchen, we've been having all the public service mission meetings in there.
Amen.
Plus all of the uh. The Lions Club meets in there, all the town council businesses in there, there's a new business coming in there. And I'll get into that in just a second, but uh you know, we've been, we've been utilizing the building a lot. If there's, you know, if we do this, it would actually save us about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars over twenty five year period.
Bob, on the uh, on the roof, will they repair the roof before they put these panels in place?
That roof is four years old.
Okay.
That roof, the roof and the AC in this building is four years old.
Alright.
So there's absolutely no repairs need done to this roof at all.
And will they penetrate the the roof?
Yes.
And do they guarantee the penetration so that?
Yes.
Leak? Okay. Okay, cool beans.
But uh this has benefited us greatly. And it'd be a good, you know, good thing to say, you know, to get going here because we could use it, so have look what's, look what happened here. Look what Fayette County did up at Golliver Bridge there. As a whole.
Okay. And you have part of this funding already?
Yes, actually, we have some grant money funding already, that kind of breaks it down on the sheet right there.
Okay.
Other than the grants coming, the grant is thirty seven thousand. So we've got everything except for the eighty three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars, which is the final cost for us. Out of the two hundred, over the two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, we have everything but the eighty three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight. I think I gave it to you on this page right here.
So before we vote on that, why don't you present the other um projects you have here?
Alright, the other, one of the other things that gets on here besides, I'll get to that, that's where I get to this, the other new business getting ready to come into town hall is Backroads of West Virginia. Backroads of West Virginia started out in Cross Plains, I have actually jumped on and have taken it all over. To promote the motorcycle tour in West Virginia. So in September, we have two car shows coming up in September, one, both of them in Golliver Bridge, one of them is cruising the curves. And we've already got to set up to, we're gonna meet at the New River Bridge Parking on Friday night. Cruise over to the driving theater in Oak Hill, do car related stuff over movies and run a heat and then. Saturday, they're gonna meet at Oak Hill at the uh. New River Center Hospital Center Clinic Center Parking Lot, then they're gonna go from there. Back over to Route sixty, over to Ray Nail, over to Richwood, back to your Summer Hill, back to Golliver Bridge. For an all evening car show. With loud music and food and everything, there are people going from Georgia, Alabama, Florida.
This is the one that you saw in Kentucky?
Well, this is part of what the guy in Kentucky's doing, we jumped in over here and started this now, we've actually switched it all proper like he did. And so it's uh, it's getting a lot of ground in town as, which is in, it starts in Golliver, it's an icon, it's already got seventy one thousand followers on Facebook. The guy was gonna give it all up and I, that's gonna do it, not that, not to let that leave us. Because I mean, we had a hundred fifty motorcycles on the pack on Saturday. And go every time.
I know in the cruise to the wall, my cousin lives in Washington State. And uh he stopped the waterfalls when he was going through and then I met him in Anstett. It was uh pretty cool, he was telling me about it.
The next project is, that's your up in the John, is boat dock. Mister Thor, would you come, come up here with this one real quick?
On the, on the boat docks, did you get approval through the Army Corps to get them into the river?
This one here, we have approval because we do not actually have to go into the river, everything will be on the back.
Okay.
They will all sit off the game, off the, off the sides coming in.
Is this down there right there, see I mapped some locations on that map social along Golly, Golly River. For put-ins and takeouts, is this the one right down there that we talked about?
This one will be right below Oxford's Machine Shop on the Golliver. The town owns a piece of property right there.
Yeah, that's.
That's where, that's where it'll go.
Yeah.
The one side of it is ADA compliant, the other side is regular.
Yes.
Okay, and the dock itself will not be in the river?
The dock will be in the river, but you only have to have approval if you're gonna put poles in the river. If you're. If you're using a bank dependent, you don't have to have any of their proof. That, that wall, that wall tie in right back here.
Yeah.
And all this boats floats, floats out in the river, but as long as you don't have to put poles and anchor it in the river, you don't have to have it in, it kind of approves.
So you found a way around their.
Yes.
Regulations did.
What you got to do? Now, the reason I'm, I'm asking for this and he can take, he can verify more than I can. There's no place to take out.
We know that, yeah, and did you give it to a presentation a few years ago back down?
Service focuses right here to change the entire face of this town down there, that is the most beautiful river. And Swiss, it's all flat water down to Golliver Bridge. You've got uh, there's several, and X towns along the way. Uh you've got uh, there's pictures in the river, old millstones, there's just so much down there, but the biggest problem we have. The worst part of that trip is the end of it, when we get to the end, and I actually brought, I brought stuff for Apple, Android, I was hoping. Put on a screen, but about five foot back right here. And you know, you've got us sitting there hauling up boats and doing this stuff and, you know, I don't have another ten years of. It's a hard.
Well, it's a first, if it, it's a perfect family section.
Yes.
From there to, you know, like I said, I I've mapped all that, I'm after the trail even coming down through there, even going off the trussel. Whether you can use it in the future, but I I know exactly the area you're talking about, I mean, this is. I I agree with this a hundred and ten percent.
There's more.
Go ahead, sure.
There is a outdoor counter make. Uh well, just to tell you, people that have contacted me over the last couple of years, we've had fishing tournaments who want to come down there. Some of the people, there were a thousand members in their things, you know, you might have three hundred boats come in. And again, no place to launch these things or anything, there is a major outdoors company here in Fayette County. That is wanting to put a. Fence core down there in Golliver Bridge, that they need a dock. And once that docks there, you're gonna have restaurants there, and you're gonna have a little tiny other pop pop up, and I think.
No, I agree.
We have a new sport, a good shot coming right there.
I I I mapped a couple of other put-ins other than Swiss that. I'm after the cup, and now if that, that's something that. I mean, I would be interested in y'all pursuing, I mean, I know it's not Golliver Bridge, but.
I I don't.
I think there needs to be shorter areas depending on water level.
With the backroads, we're not only, you know, we're not only. With the backroads, we're not only, you know, we're not only looking at the side of it is motorsports, we're also looking at this side of it. And we've done been over to Clay and talked to Clay about the railcars they have over there because they're not gonna use those anymore.
Yeah.
Because the state park gonna take all that over.
So if there's other places too on putting these docks in or something like that, and put-ins, as short versions, say you've got a three-year-old or a five-year-old, you don't wanna spend eight hours in the water with them, you can do a shorter version, the family can do a shorter version just to start other. I mean, there's a lot of different options out there for a couple of put-ins, not only Swiss, but Jody. Don't you mix, I mean, there's, there's a place you can.
And then, you know, everybody said, well, you got, you got the new put-in on the, on the new river, well, that's well and good, but nobody wants to do that flood the grip and then paddle up the new river.
Well, you can go either way, they can camp there and go back down and come back over, I mean, I will come out there and get out there and eat somewhere and then paddle back up, I I know I haven't paddled back up, but I'm sure you can, you, you, there's a way you can paddle back up, there's not a whole lot of current there.
Can't, well, if you ever wanna paddle, alright, I got.
My shoulders are done with the paddling. That's gone, but yeah, I'm 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 excited about it. I think you go up on the shore, that's where you have less resistance.
Yeah. The shore, what then?
Going up along the shore would give you less resistance.
Yes.
Instead of paddling out.
It still takes about forty five minutes, believe it or not, it takes forty five minutes. On the Oster welding shop, we get down to Glen Fairs down to that, cut it off right there, and it's really not much better. It's a steep, uh, like that, and if you have to pave, but uh, you know, you're still on, on the start up, it's, it's difficult.
It's weird there because that current in that river goes this way, but then as it comes up the bank, it comes back the other way.
Swirls back.
It swirls back there. Even the new river, when the water gets out, it does the same thing, it goes back up towards Camp River.
Did you guys um compete this, like to get this design and everything?
That is actually through uh EZ Docks. And the reason we wanted to go with them is because the way everything locks together. There's not another company out there that makes a dock like this.
Send them to take the toys.
Mm-hmm.
I know you've been working on that dock thing for quite some time.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Well, could you, could you, could you spend a lot of money? If you say. I know what you, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but as far as the dock wise, as far as finding one that sounds like that and uh hangs together like this one does, without having to have a casket in the rear. And they're not there.
And it's gonna have the ADA lunch and regular?
Yes.
It's cool.
At some point in time, I'd like to have a bench.
A bench.
At some point in time, I'd like to put one on the new river. Right about the bus stop or whatever. Just but trying to find one that you can get set in there that's uh
And then.
It's a little bit different, a little different animal.
Alright, who's uh who's putting in the solar?
Solar Hall.
That's the name.
That's the name of the solar hall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were they based out of?
One of them.
Okay. Okay.
They've done several, my neighbors. They've wrote your job.
That's, that's who I'm in contact, I've got two big barns and two big houses. So. I think, I think Ms. Taylor's, and I I think she's right, there's an issue with us just lacking the money for that dock, I think what we'll have to do to approve is give allocation money for, to you. And then you take and go through the process of getting a bid to do it.
Okay. Yeah, you have to have it. You have to bid it out because it's a government contract, so.
Now, if there's only person can do it, and comes back one bid, I mean, they're just.
Yeah, but you have to go through that public.
Actually, all I will do is purchase, we'll get the volunteers to put it in without it.
Fifteen thousand more has to be spent. Yeah, that thing's three, I'm down. Yeah, it's thirty nine, I'm sure, yeah.
And it will come down a little bit because I figured in two different platforms down, and I'll do one go with the ADA platform, I'll just two of the other, the ADA platform is why it's welcome down just a little bit.
Are you adding them to that?
Yeah.
That's what I was giving you, I'll go ahead. I rely on your figures.
Yes. So basically, both, maybe nationally, hold up, there's the same zone, two same dock. About here.
It's a hundred and twenty two thousand eighty five.
Say about one twenty five. Yeah, make it even.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a problem.
Well, I mean, I think that whatever isn't spent on it has needs to be returned.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to uh Golly, the Golly Bridge projects, and anything that's not used will be returned to the uh back to the county. Second. All in favor?
Uh I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the money we put aside for the guy.
I can't wait to see it down there.
Can't wait to see all the other equipment.
Well, I can't wait to see the solar and the dock.
Nicholas County, talk to those guys.
They're not. Well, I have to check, you know, my map social. Because I, I'm telling you this. And I like, I mean.
Thanks, Bob.
In fact, it might be on a comprehensive plan, you might get a full plan, it's a plan to see if you're not located. Alright, that amount has been, that creek has been approved, we're just waiting on Golly County, the uh commission to do it, Camp Sor.
Within week six. Um so, Camp Sor's kind of gave you the benefit of the county, and our mission in Adventure Bay County is to effectively utilize resources to expose kids to meaningful activities, engage them in active meaningful activities, and then mentor them along the way. And we're doing it. Um we hired, I don't know if you met Shelby Wolf, she's our site supervisor. And and then when we hired Shelby, in turn, we hired Emma Workman to be our assistant supervisor, and Liz Rahal is our senior counselor. Um we get the jackpot, the trio, they're amazing. They're um efficient, they're organized, they're kind of the kids, they communicate well with the parents. Um they communicate really well with the junior counselors, they're doing a really great job. Uh we promoted the camp through the schools, the schools have been on board since the conception of this. Every single eligible student got a flyer. Um it went out on their social media pages, the school's social media pages, and it went out on School G, the parent platform. Um we know that it went to all the schools because we have schools from every single elementary school in counties that have our kids that have participated from every school. We've had counselors refer kids who were like, hey, this kid is, needs some help, they've gone out to their home with the waivers and everything and made sure that the right, some of the right kids who needed to be there got there. Um the schools are well that aware that there's a mental health crisis among our kids. Um they're really working hard with us to make sure that this is happening. They provided transportation um from the valley and from Oak Hill, we've had school buses on Thursdays when we go to Ace, the Ace Bus brings, picks up the kids at the county park and takes them back. So um I don't know if that's a, the school is a sustainable transportation piece, but it's been working and it's been getting kids there that otherwise would not be able to get there. Um the county park's been a perfect setting, it's, we've utilized probably about seventy percent of the park. Um if we have a pool, I think it'll be easier to grow the camp, but um it's, it's been a really great place to, and it's been great to see these kids uh being active in the park. Like I said, on Thursdays, we go to Ace, some of the kids have said that they selected their week based on our Ace trip. We survey the kids every week and um they all have different favorite things, but those Ace trips are really important. They, they really look forward to getting out there and doing the real things, mountain biking and stand-up paddle boarding and paddling and climbing and all of that. We were concerned about a load of load numbers, um our first week, we only had thirteen campers, we've grown every week. This week, we have twenty nine registered campers. When we reached, I talked to our, our mentor is Bull Park up in Morgantown. Um I talked to the assistant director there and she was like, those are great numbers for the first year of camp. She said, you cannot build a camp without first hosting the camp and building clout and building a reputation in the community. And you wanna make sure that you do things right, so you have a good reputation rather than being in over your head. Um she said, don't worry about that, you're gonna grow if you're doing it right, so. And that was our biggest concern. Uh about a dozen of our kids who signed up for one week came back for more weeks, and we've had several kids that have come for five or six weeks through the whole thing. Uh did you get the flyer that Amy printed for you? Yeah, uh we've had a ton of partners, financial partners, of course, the Fayette County, Greater Kama Valley Foundation, Brookfield Renewable, Fayette County National Bank, Adventure Appalachia. Um and then tons of volunteers providing equipment, we've had to buy some of our own, but um and then coming out with their skills and helping the kids do whatever they do, and the list of things that the kids did is long. Um Mr. Good here has provided a bunch of paddle boards for the kids, we did invest in some inflatable kayaks, and having that pond in the park for the kids to fish, and then on other days paddle, it's been really, really cool. Um there's quotes on the back of this flyer, you know. But that feedback we're getting from parents is, is pretty mind-blowing, like how happy their kids are, how tired they are. Um I presented about Camp Sor at the Prevention Coalition yesterday, and one of the coalition members has adopted, or is participating in the camp, I didn't know, make the connection. And he said that uh she's had some behavior issues, and during camp, there's been, she comes home dirty, tired, with a sparkle in her eye and talking about camp all the time, so um we're doing, we're doing the good work, really are, and as a prevention piece of the puddle, as the puzzle, I mean, this investment is, it's gonna go a long way and it's gonna grow exponentially. Um in the prevention field, we say for every dollar spent, there's eighteen to twenty dollars saved. So if we can look at this in the long term, I really think that we can build a community of um resilient kids. One of the best things I think about the camp is, we've had seven, we hired seven counselors. Um they've worked part-time, we let the kids, you know, so they've gone on communication, so we usually have about four counselors there every week, sometimes five. But watching those young people grow, um they're as young as fourteen, as old as seventeen, but watching them grow and change and be a mentor to younger students, it's pretty powerful. Um one student I have mentored myself over the years, he uh, he was a kid that would never shut up, was always doing dangerous things. Was just like drive, drive you crazy, and now I'm watching him tell kids, hey, be quiet, you need to listen to this, this is important, no, don't do that, that's dangerous. So seeing that's, it's really, really cool. Um I hope the people of Fayette County see the, the importance of this investment that you all have made. I, I think people understand, and I think that I I've been through the coalition and through Adventure Bay County, we have offered programming to thousands of kids, families, but this right here seems to be hitting it the, the best. Uh just by having that day after day, five days a week mentorship programming, the kids are challenged. They're, they're suffering, right, they're out there mountain biking, suffering, and then afterwards, they're high-fiving, and I did it. So we're building some, we're building some stronger kids. Um I just wanted to report out, um we don't have an ask right now, I know we've talked about future years. I think that we can really make this really big, and I think we could probably provide programming through the year as well. The summers are important, um but we don't wanna lose what we've started, if we can do some winter programming and if, then we can offer to you know, looking at Bull Park, the evidence for senior citizens and for the whole community, but I think we got a really good start.
How did the um scholarships process work? I, I mean, were there a lot of kids who needed scholarships?
There were, um I have it, uh how many of you did scholarship? Um I think, I think about forty of those were full part, full scholarship, the rest were partial, we went ninety percent, so they had to have a little skin in the game. Um half, and then some kids only paid ten dollars, and most of those kids were the kids that were counselor referred. Um the scholarship money came from the Greater Kama Valley Foundation.
I'm, I heard good things about the program, I went down to the valley pre-K through eight last week, and there were some kids who participated who loved it. And one of the teachers told me that other kids were lamenting that it was too expensive, and I said, well, there were scholarships. Um so I don't know, I was telling Brian with meeting, I don't know if it was anecdotal, or if, you know, the seventy dollars a week was a deterrent, but, but I wondered. Um and I haven't approached this with my college yet, but if, if we shouldn't sponsor some scholarships to make it more accessible to more kids next year to get the word out, and then maybe start phasing in uh like have a pre-camp next year.
Yeah.
And start losing it in.
No, I've talked to Esther from Coda, and so, so the ninety percent scholarship, that's ten dollars
Mm-hmm.
a week. She felt that when they made it free, kids would just kinda come and go. Yeah, but, I mean.
Well, I mean, having grown up in the valley, I know that free would have gotten my sister and me down there.
And I know.
I mean, we would have been.
They don't go to their kids' basketball game because they can't afford the five dollars, so that is, that is a real concern and I think it'd be great.
I mean, it can hurt my health, I think, yeah, um but, you know, if we charged this year, if we didn't charge next year, we might be able to get more participation, let the words out.
Yeah, I, I think that a kid communication, you know, like I did this, I did this, it's gonna go a long way.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think there's a possibility too to work with our municipalities during this next year and uh make them aware of what's going on
Mm-hmm.
to try to get the word out.
Yeah, they might.
Uh we've got Oak Hill with us today, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I was really impressed with the broad range of things you did, now I knew, you know, I could guess some of the things you were gonna do, but you know, cross stitch, I didn't expect, you know, there were just some things in here that I just did not expect. So it, I mean, that's, that's a whole lot of uh educating.
Yeah.
You guys were doing down there.
Yeah, the National National Park Service uh had the kids in the creek, had them in Laurel Creek, um looking for invertebrates. I mean, they were, you know, how many of you have looked for crawdads, his kids, all of you, everybody, right?
Yeah.
But these kids, they don't have the opportunity, they don't have the free range that we had when we were young, and to see them digging around in the creek.
How many of you threw them in a thing of boiling water and ate them afterwards?
Um Well, I, I think it was a success, I really do. Like everything I heard was, you know, the kids who didn't get a go were envious of the kids who did get a go. And they need something like that, when I was talking to them, you know, Montgomery Pool closed, and so there's nothing down there for anybody to do, so to be able to get kids in communities like that, at least until we can get something closer to them.
Yeah, having the schools busing the kids was such a, you know, such a win, I don't, I don't know, I hope, I hope we can keep that relationship going, Mr. Parsons, it's been great working with us.
I did ask that question to the kids, I said, you know, if you could have full stuff to do, would you mind being on a bus forty-five minutes each way, you know, and they were like, no way. Yeah, it's fine with us. So I, I think that's true, I think they're, they're used to being on a bus that long now, so it's not as big a deal.
Yeah, I think so too, and I'm tired. Good time to chill out, um, Shelby is amazing, we had her for six months, um, Nicole, we're looking at ways to keep her. Because, you know, she needs a year-round job. Um, Emma is planning on coming back. Liz is in med school, she's not sure what she'll do next summer, but uh. We, you know, to to be planning and providing things, it would be nice if we could figure out a year-round and, you know, position for Shelby. So we have applied for some funding uh, for her, but we don't find out until September. She's done a really good job.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, oh, I look forward to talking about, what are our next steps, talking about next year?
Well, I think the sooner we have the numbers for next year, the better, so Ruth can work on the budget, incorporating them into the budget.
Yeah, okay. Great, alright, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
The kids had fun in the pond.
They had fun, right?
In the pond.
Yes.
I I sat and watched them for a while.
Awesome.
And uh, they're playing, so it was pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah, we we say no swimming, but somehow they fall off all the time. Yeah, it's been great, thank you.
Just in case anybody's around to remember, I have several paddle boards, if you need them. Okay.
Yeah.
I've got four.
Okay, awesome.
The meter was you, was you gonna, I'm sorry.
Hey Katie, I'll have to get in, I'll text you my garage code so you can get up with the paddles there, cause I'm not, I'm leaving town today.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about the uh.
Okay, sweet, I'll text you my garage.
In 2016.
Yeah, you wanna come on?
Um, do you guys have copies of any of the things that I sent along? Um, I know you said she sent them along, she just didn't know if you had our copies.
Yeah, we just.
I don't see it mapped, so. Uh, I'm gladly do that, I'm gonna have a technology set up for it next time. Um, so, um, I'll try to be brief here, basically this is about the Harlem Heights uh, park, the Russell Matthews Park there. Uh, in Oak Hill, formerly owned by the county commission. And the the park was deeded to Oak Hill in two thousand sixteen. Um, we kinda stumbled across what we feel maybe was a discrepancy with the deed, ultimately there were three tracks. Um. And that were part of that park, and only two of them were included in the deed, so um, it's the two small, I didn't really, this is just our general park map.
Right, the big track was not included in the deed, is that correct?
Right, so the the part you see the pavilion and this track, that's one of the tracks, the basketball court is the other track. And this larger track, which you can see where the walking trail is located, um. We stumbled across the fact that it was still in the county commissions, and I saw that on the website. Uh, with the parcel map, and I I know very well that that takes time to update, and I thought, well, maybe it's just not updated. And so I started looking into it a little further, and it looks like that one was in fact not included in the deed from the best that I can tell. Um, and so we obviously were not aware of that fact when we installed the walking trail, cause we started that process. Pretty much immediately after the planning of that process, pretty much immediately after. Um, the commission agreed to execute the deed on that, so I think it was assumed that all, all of that went. Um, and then, uh, in, it came to light of late that 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 larger track did in fact not. So the request would be that um, we just correct that discrepancy and and have maybe a corrected deed or whatever legal counsel would. I guess determine will be the most appropriate uh, corrective action.
What?
Yeah.
I mean, it it appears that just a portion of the parcel was not left conveyed, so we just need to do a conveyance of whatever. Um, I'm gonna take a look if I can underneath, just so I'll make sure, but. That simple fix is that we just didn't convey, we just need to convey whatever parcel, and it's permissioned.
It's already been approved, I'm sure, just not been processed, is that right or wrong?
That's what it sounded like.
It was approved in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, I have excerpts.
How do you prove it? I was actually at that meeting when they did it, re-approved, okay, a motion to re-approve. All favor.
Alright, so let's correct the deed. Um, do you have counsel working on, did you have somebody review this and find it, you have somebody?
We did not, I found it, I have some of the documentations I was gonna pass along, I didn't know how.
Pass it to the prosecutor's office and then.
Would.
I have Colleen back to order. And since uh, Ms. Stewart's not gonna be here today, we're just gonna postpone, I'll make a motion to postpone until uh, otherwise.
I think we just need to take it off because we don't have a date yet.
Okay.
We need a date to postpone.
Alright, good. Ruth's wanna finish.
Okay, Wes, opioid settlement, did you look at what?
I did, I only thing to know is just this one has, if the the payment assistance is by created. Um, just so you guys know. It's not unusual for settlements to have participation rate, and then monthly the participation rate. Additional funds go out, in this one, sixty-eight million dollars is what we settled by, and so it's thirty-four initial to the. The rate and then incremental from there, um, otherwise the standard. Uh, advice, but also just this morning, I mean, this, the the release is expansive, so. There is no other legal. Um, action that can be taken, and you can dance, but I mean, that's been standard with all of us, so I'll settle those concerns.
Okay, well, I move that we sign the opioid settlement currently.
Second, take it all in favor. Hey Wes, will they use the same percentage that we're getting on all the others, the one percent?
They have incorporated the percentage base within this one, so the other thirty-four million, it will be our portion. Of that very four and then the rest is. So it was, it was adopted and incorporated within the distribution.
Yeah, it's, they're all being handled the same way, John.
And Allison, you're going to the, to the things on this for us, to the discussions and the meetings?
Not on this, um, Wes represented us at where they elected the regional director.
Okay.
On our behalf, um, I'm doing the SRJ lawsuit.
Okay.
On our behalf, but that um, deposition was postponed. Um, because the plaintiffs didn't have their acts together.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. So.
So Wes, and. I'm trying to remember, I'm sorry if I'm asking redundant questions, but. It was all based on the amount of pharmacies, not the amount of deaths.
So there were three factors commissioned, uh, one was the amount of pills that was sent into. Uh, every, the other was based on, uh, uh, there was a population, um, entered. And then the last one was uh, the amount of of people who were diagnosed with subsubuse disorders. And we have previously talked about. Uh, now that was agreed upon, um, metric. Uh, at a state level, one to be fair, was a metric at a national level as well. Um, and as the commitment notes. That has potentially skewed some, some factors, because we don't have, we have F M R S here that will make a diagnosis. But of course, F M R S can be shared with Raleigh County Summers Town, um, Main Road. And so it's not unusual for our, our citizens to go to Raleigh County for the overflow of that. If one of our citizens went into Raleigh County and got diagnosed, that's within their numbers. So it, that, those are the factors that play when they assess and broke down. Um, the percentage base, which is why you guys will see a county like Wyoming County. It, Wyoming County as well as the cities of Pineville and Oceana. Had more voting strength and more proportion than Fayette, Nickless. And all the municipalities in in between, even though our population triples that.
Yeah, it was poorly thought out.
The, the assessment that relies, i- it notes that the metric is per. Even though it's not specific to population, the metrics themselves favor populations because of the. Our populations have more people being treated, they have more resources, pharmacies, et cetera, and so. It, it does favor rural communities, it's not a metric to address rural communities. Um, but there were, to be frank, there were no other adopted policies. Um, for this, we kind of, we, our state will adopt the national level, and this is what was debated in several national levels.
Yeah, by people who don't understand the issues clearly. So, um.
No more questions? No, alright, Ruth, then we'll move on.
Uh-huh, the next is the logo. Submission, did you have that in in there?
Three.
There were three, sorry.
So. Only one of the three. Submitted draft logos, which is really what I had in mind. I mean, isn't that what we asked for?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
And I did like one of the. Several. That bit are submitted. Quite well. Maybe a change or two. Did you guys look at all of those?
Yeah, I looked at, yeah.
I liked this one.
I didn't too.
I mean, I'd like to see the eighteen thirty-one incorporated into it, but.
They all could be changed a little bit.
That's my favorite.
That's not my favorite.
You have an explanation about what everything you mean.
I mean, it was pretty cool that he did that. I mean, it it was, I mean, it, you know, but who would get, nobody would get it.
Well, you would put a description on the website.
You know.
And none of those three proposals are concrete, they're, they're proposals, they're what they can offer.
I don't think we need to make a decision today, I think this is just letting us know what.
I think we ought to make a decision by next agenda, on the next agenda.
About what design we want?
Oh, no, who's, who, who, who?
Well, only one, I mean, only one.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Designs.
Yeah, you're right.
Everybody else just said, I'll design something for you.
And bring forth, and then later down again.
For me. Um.
Yeah, but I I think some of them could be tweaked, I mean, I I looked at them, I don't, I like a couple of them, but. No, I, I mean, I think that's a little too much, but I'm.
Oh, Lord, I don't think those are intended, those are just.
Yeah, those are just samples of what he's done. Well, can we? I guess a color, I I'm a, I'm a big color person, I guess. I guess I'm going too far, that's why you get professional designers. You have, you have certain designs for certain things.
Well, can we agree that only one met the expectations that we had?
Oh, yeah.
So we can agree to work with that one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, and then we'll make a decision by next meeting on what design and and we're tweaking, we might want. I guess I'm gonna be out in left field on this one, I guess I'm, I'm gonna be thumbing the dogs on this one, I can tell. And I just. I just, I, I mean, it's just, I mean, I I'm not a designer, so I mean, that uh. I guess I'm a little more flashy when it comes to logos and stuff, I guess, that's why I put mine down there.
For you guys.
I guess I got that little silly city.
My favorite is this one.
Even though I have a preview of it.
Except it doesn't have the eighteen thirty-one in it, we're trying to redesign our county logo because it's pretty old and we wanna. We wanna brand ourselves and market ourselves well, I'm so glad you're. Um. And. I'm just, I'm just kinda interesting, building one company in this one. Submitted, um. Actual designs, which is what we were seeking.
Yeah. We're just not postponing the saving until next agenda meeting.
Well, I, yeah, I I think, well, I, I think we can go ahead and choose to work with this. Um, I move that we, uh, so the one he submitted designs with Corporal Cypher's, is with the Sheriff's Department. Um, I move that we go ahead and work with Corporal Cypher to come up with a logo design.
Second, all in favor? Did you? Nays?
No, no, I, I.
Okay, well, I couldn't hear you, John, I didn't.
Oh. Yeah, I.
Okay, the next is Amy, your courthouse facilities and procurement authority.
Changing scope. Okay, and um, I've been, so we got our, um. Um, we got our structural engineering report back. Um, it is worse than we initially expected or thought, um, she did suggest that, um. The top, the, what we originally said, the parapets need to come down, the stones at the very top, need to come down and be reset. She needs, she said that we need to add flashing there, if there is none, um, but that will only be noticed once excavation happens. Um, what she anticipates that they're gonna also find when they take down that first um, set of bricks. From the top of the window up to the top of the building is that the lentils that are over the windows, um, have rusted. And that's what's causing everything to break loose, because when they rust, they expand, um, they kinda unfurl. So she also thinks that, um, upon further inspection, once they start taking those bricks down, it may go all the way down to the. Floor level of that second floor. Um, and it's on all four sides, not just the two that we thought, so. Um, I spoke with the CFI, they said we will need to do a change of scope since we didn't initially include, um, the. Lentil replacement, and they also, um, and the contractors that came to the last pre-bid also said that they need, um. Elit, elitful tiles, I should have looked that up before I said it. Um, but tiles that help keep the bricks ad- adhered to the.
You did well.
Clay, okay, good. Um, so there's just a couple of other things that need to be done to ensure that we're not just. Putting the bricks up against a wall that's gonna fall down again, so we need to apply for a change of scope, and they said just get a letter signed in blue ink. By our president, asking for that.
Well, I move that we approve the letter requesting a change of scope.
So, all in favor? You know, you can look at these bricks in the photo, you, when you drive by or just walk by, you really don't pay attention to it.
You start, you start looking, you're like, oh gosh, and we'll probably have to break this up into two phases based on, we'll bid out the entire project, the entire building. To get a complete scope of what it's gonna cost, and then we'll go from there, and we can apply for another CFI that finishes the project next year.
You did a good job on putting this together and.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
So this is our first budget revision, the brain setup article. Uh, big chunk of this budget revision, it's the P E I A additional increase, it's three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, across the board, so.
A year?
Yes.
Now, that's not the total, like, that was just basically the other half, so. Cause initially, what was it, John, I know you remember, three something, so close to seven hundred thousand dollar increase on our P E I A premium. So next year, you really might wanna look at something else, with the caveat, if you do, and you leave P E I A, you cannot go back. So.
The initial was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Right.
And then they come back with that secondary amount.
And we did have a few open enrollment changes that affected it a little bit, but I mean, it's still three hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah. Chunky change.
That is a little chunky change.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the rest of it, so one of the things I added to was capital outlay, cause we said we would look at that. Once we had our carryover, because we have a lot of vehicles that are gonna have to be replaced. Like the D R C is gonna have to have a van, animal control, I think is over two hundred thousand miles at this point. Preachers, I mean, it's just never-ending.
My motion to approve the budget provision.
Let John move based on how the order is written.
What's, what's? What's, what's?
John, will you make the motion based, the, the way the order is written?
Yeah.
Direct order.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, budget revision.
I second it.
All favor.
Uh, one is your signature, you're the attorney.
Ruth, are you still looking for another insurance company, force?
Yeah, we were just about to start on earlier. What we ran into last year, this is one of the companies we're in. We had one company and then. Like, the coverage would have been horrible, so. I don't know what your answer is gonna be.
Uh, I think we need to start looking. Can you put a question on list serve to see what other counties use?
The only P E I, with the exception of a couple that have Highmark and Highmark. What they came back with, we got, we got people wise and like many of the calls goes, I don't know. I'll send you the change, John.
Oh, I didn't get a chance to.
I apologize.
Okay, you will move with the next one.
Yeah, and then the next thing is a letter from Anthony, Anthony is in trial. He asked for a budget adjustment and salary changes for Mr. Preney, and he has something shocking. Um.
I, I discussed these with Anthony at length. I have long felt both of these folks were. Underpaid for their skill sets over there and their experience levels. Um, and I encouraged him to come in and um, requesting increases.
I'll also point out, his bottom line, basically the only change was the P E I. Cause he moved money from salaries down to like investigative spans and that type of thing, so he just.
Well, first, I would like to state that our jail bill has gone from a hundred and forty thousand dollars a month. Down to seventy-some thousand dollars a month, because of the extra time that they're spending on the jail bill to make sure we properly bill.
Right.
Um, I, I feel that the movement of the money within his budget is justified. So I will go ahead and make that motion to approve. The additional monies.
I'll second.
All in favor?
And just, just to add, um, Wes has been made chief deputy and uh, Ms. Shockey is the only assistant in the office who has a. Bachelor's degree.
Motion to adjourn.